And we are out at?
Moving on to item 11, as a German, I would like to make a motion for item 11. Can I get a second?
All second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner, call the wall, please.
Worsley?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Miracle?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 6:19. Okay. We have to move to our other.
Yes, we're ready.
All right.
I'll just leave the recorder on, so I think we're good.
All right, good evening. Welcome to the committee meeting for September 12th, 2017. Excuse me. Item A, our discussion items. Our first one is our city council's school board liaison, Miss Donna Lake. Welcome. It's been awhile.
Thank you.
Hello, stranger.
Very excited to have you.
Sometimes they listen to a whole lot to report because we were going into fiscal emergency and that was all assuming. But there have been some things that I'm happy to report on. You may have heard in the paper, I'm sure you've read it by now, that Paycor has decided to stay here and build a second building and parking garage, and we are very grateful for that. We are just in the early discussions, and I'm sure that we will come to you, we have advised them to come to you and talk to them about, I'm sure that they want a tip from us, very similar to what they had in their first building, and so they have to come to the school board to make you guys whole or come to some of the stadium. So we're quite happy about that. Also, there is some movement on property of the industrial building that was a packaging company on Harris Avenue, and there was a grant that was obtained to remediate, renew this justice and to look at anything that might be a problem there and have that building torn down. They indicated to us that the company who is doing the construction, eventually at an office building, would like to have this be a non-occupy Harris Avenue to have, so that, and I was shocked when I walked in how much land there is on Harris Avenue, there's probably as much land on the street as there is on buildings. But it's the street that goes nowhere, and so, because that was closed off when it wasn't happening, the bridge was put in, so I'm sure we will be entering into discussions with them. I have some ideas if I have to ask, and in return for us giving the street, but that'll be my own personal, if I get that pulled off, I'll come back and report that to you. And then, of course, what you all know about is, we saw some preliminary plans for the condos at both Norah Baptist Christian Church and School and Allison School. My understanding is that they have been in negotiations with you all, and I'm not quite sure where that is, but we got some preliminary plans. The planning commission did unanimously approve the plans. There's a plan due to development overlay on that property, so we can kind of control what things look like, and the planning commission unanimously approved the request to have the extra stories built onto those flat-roofed buildings, and we'll be holding public hearings on that in the future, so we'll set those dates pretty soon. So there will be a chance for the public to be heard. I looked at some of the plans, and the mayor said to the mayor, "I could, I could live there, that would be really nice," and he said, "I could too," and I'm like, "Only at the penthouse, though, that would be really nice," and he said, "Oh, we couldn't be neighbors, Mary and I would just go crazy if we were together." As I got older, and those kinds of things look very, very nice, lots of people have said, you know, they're looking forward to having condos where they can stay in the community and not have to worry about yard work and stuff, so we appreciate your being up into the negotiations for that. As always, we, I am a liaison between city council and the financial planning and supervision commission, so we meet monthly and review progress towards getting out of fiscal emergency. We've been fortunate, our earnings tax has been up most of this year, about 10 percent, 10 to 12 percent, hopefully that will remain for the rest of the year, but we're always cautious, we have, both the treasurer and the auditor, both take a very conservative approach to what they expect to get in, and if we do better than that, then that's all good. But it's just a struggle to try to get things under control, so little by little, we are trying to scavenge on expenses and then increase, obviously increase our revenues. So with the things that are on the horizon, things are looking more positive than they were a few months ago. TriHealth is also moving into the old ITT tech building, so they are moving some of their executive offices over there, so that's another positive. That we had hoped had been done sometime before the end of the year, but it looks like it may be a little later than that. They're doing a lot of remodeling inside that building in order to do things, so those are just some of the positive things that we hope to get in the future to increase our revenues. Do you have questions?
Quick question, US Plan Card building? What's happening with that?
Not much. There were, there was some original interest. Originally, they wanted, they wanted an ungodly amount of money in the study, it was crazy, nobody was even remotely interested in it. And then there was, there's been some interest lately in condos as well, but that's such a large tract of land that it's kind of the last bastion of land, if you will, so I think that the city and the planning commission is really more interested in getting something more retail office in there. So, not much that I know of, anyway.
No one's bought that property yet?
Not to my knowledge.
Still owned by US Plan Cards? Or who owns?
US Plan Card, not that I know of, no one has bought that.
So they still own it? They're still sitting on the property, got it? What about the Quality Hotel?
We are in, the city is in federal court because they sued us for miscoordination. They have nothing to do with the prostitution or drugs that were going on, it's their contention that they were discriminated against, and so we, the city is in court defending that. A couple weeks ago, our law department and a law office and outside legal counsel filed a 58-page brief on why it should be thrown out, so we're just waiting for that. My understanding is, it's already been sold to, to other people, there's an investment group who want to develop that, and from the plans I've seen, it looks really, really nice. I mean, they plan to make it like a destination hotel, where everything would be green, they would replace the windows with energy, or solar-powered windows, so they could collect energy, they would generate their own electricity to power the thing, put a dome over a swimming pool, and have trees and stuff on the top. So the plans look really wonderful, it's just that I think they're looking for, to get a lot, they're financing, and then they apply for tax credits through the state of Ohio to get the green energy, it will be tax credit, so between those two things, it's stalled. We are frustrated as anybody else, because we, that has been going on for a couple of years now, so it's still, my understanding is, the property was transferred, it's already sold, so it's just a matter of that group of investors moving forward.
How's our police officers?
I feel sorry for them, they're working a lot of hours, we're down several, many. Council has approved and appropriated money to hire at least eight, and to purchase a couple of cruisers, and so that process takes a top, takes time, it's the, they, we gave a test, and there is a list, they had to go through psychological testing and physical challenges and all that stuff, and then they do background and drug testing, so it's moving forward. We asked that question in every council meeting as well, when are they going to be hired? So there, there is money in the financial recovery plan for eight additional police officers, and there was some question about whether they could train eight at one time, they need to get on board, we can't have them trained, so my understanding is that all, all of the people on the list either been officers before, or have been trained, have gone to school, so there won't be much training, it will just be kind of letting them know how to do things the way more, what does them, so once they get into the system, they'll be able to get trained pretty quickly. Nobody wants more than me, well, we all do, I mean, you can't, you just can't be enough police officers on the street. It's a tough job.
Especially when we get UDF on every Tuesday.
Getting people to sign up and take the police officer tests, because it's just, it's a, it's a tough job. It's a tough job that a lot of people just say, "I don't, I don't think I want to do that anymore."
Thank you.
You're very welcome. It's nice to, to be back with you again, and hopefully we'll have good news each month for you.
I am. Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to item D. Swami?
Sure, we wanted to let you know, we recognize that there had been an oversight, and thank you, Mr. Atwood, he pointed it out for us, and we certainly want to right any wrong, and so what we've recognized is that we haven't recognized the achievements of the swimming sport over the years, and so we are reviewing records and achievements, so that they can be recorded in a couple of ways. We want to purchase a plaque to be displayed outside of the gymnasium area in the high school, as well as in the swimming area, and we also recognize that we didn't have large banners hanging in the gym, we had it for most every other sport, but when we began to review, we realized that we didn't have it for tennis either, so we're adding banners for swimming and tennis, and they will also be placed in the high school gym, and we, we certainly want to give recognition to our students who work hard, and certainly our standouts athletically, and over the years, we want to make sure we do that, so we're glad to have this opportunity to make that so.
How about Shirley?
I, you know, I don't think there'd be anything there for Shirley, I'm not sure that they formally compete.
Right. But they compete.
They used to.
Right, because they, yeah, that's what the dance team was doing. We don't do that anymore. Okay. So, anything more on that?
No, I don't have anything more on that. Do you have questions for me, Aunt Swami?
No.
Okay. I think we're to our.
Right. I can get back to you.
So when we began to recognize a number of things, and we had to take a good look, we realized when we joined this new league, that we didn't have an academic team there. We have one here at Norwood, but the organization that we joined does not have one, so that gave us a great opportunity to investigate, and we have found a league of which we would like to participate in. Mr. Hunt, who is the coach for the academic team, and Mr. Winterod have found the Cincinnati Academic League, and so a few of the schools that participate in that are Cincinnati Country Day, Upper School, Cincinnati Hills Christian Academy, Fennetown, Indian Hill, Madeira, North College Hill, Redding, Seven Hills Upper, Summit Country Day, and Wyoming High School. So while what we had was great before, this is even better, and we're excited about truly being competitive on this stage, so it's actually a great opportunity for our students, and we're excited about it.
And so are we already part of that?
We are joining it, it's a little over $200. This week, we've been reviewing their bylaws, their competition rules, in the past, they have competed at Cincinnati State, and of course, it can take you to the state level from there, but we're, we just investigated that, and we think certainly that that's the right place for us.
Right, that sounds good. Done.
Just to step back, calls me, she doesn't have data either.
They don't.
That was pointed out to me by Mr. Atwood.
Okay. One of that to our list, we're about to make a purchase, I know that there was some work done, Mr. Atwood met with Mr. Winterod, and pictures taken of flats and other places, so, yeah.
Item D is future committee meeting locations.
So it was posed this question of perhaps, oftentimes, our committee meetings are here, and would it be easier if we had all of our meetings to clear up any confusion that someone might have if they wanted to come to a meeting, being unclear about where the meetings are? Is it best to have all of them at the high school, where there is ample seating, and it's easier for the TV crew to be there, to audiotape and videotape all of them, and so I just wanted to pose that question, is it in the best interest for us to have all of our meetings there, or should we continue as we always have, and have committee meetings here, and then the formal board meeting, or regular board meeting at High School Mini Out of Toronto?
I know, we had talked about at one time, sort of having traveling committee meetings, only because we would like to see the other buildings and what's going on, just with our upgrades, but that does make it confusing if we're going to be in Sharpsburg and view or whatnot, so, I mean, that can absolutely be discussion in terms of consistency versus the ability to, to take that opportunity to go see what's happening in the buildings. What were you going to say, Ernie?
Oh, nothing. I'm just listening.
We've done the family meetings for the board meetings in the past, and they were, it was nice to go to tour the facilities and see, especially with all the work going on in the buildings, right now, it might not be a bad idea, at least for committees to do that.
Exactly, and for committees, we don't have a lot of visitors, it's always great when we do, but they typically aren't attended, but for our regular meetings, we do, especially if we have the awards, so that's why we always do it at the high school, to be consistent for that.
Okay. Have we always had our committee meetings videotaped, or do we want to continue to do that moving forward, so that when people are on the Norwood channel, they could perhaps view them?
This is your first video tape committee meeting.
We just actually started it back up, because we wanted to make sure that we, our problem is, I mean, we've gone through this conversation, not a whole lot of people have Norwood cable TV.
Oh.
So, you know, you really, I mean, you can try and attempt to do this, but what, really, how many people are we reaching?
Right.
So, we were trying to do it, we were trying to work through, trying with the technology to get it put on our website, so that people could, you know, hear it, visit, see it, so, but, you know, that was the process we were starting.
I, I know that Pace has a website themselves, that, and I don't know if it's like Dallas deep, but no, is it links to Norwood C School sciences, so maybe we can get that done, so we can make it so they can come back over and, and follow the trail to the board meetings and committee meetings.
Are they, do they have streaming capability?
It doesn't.
I like it because it's an archive, and for some reason, I thought, I remember there was a time when we did do the committees, but maybe not.
We did, we did, a while ago. It's been awhile.
But I like it because of the archive, I mean, even though we may not call them every day and say, but there's another record there of you, of the minutes, of the meeting itself.
Well, both of the work that we do is.
And the committee.
And the committee.
And the discussions, and so that's why we wanted to.
Yeah. And we do have the audios, and we are, we're pretty, I'm not going to tell you we're 100% there yet, but we've got a lot of the audios posted now, and that's out there, but it's just an added archive. I think it's a great resource.
And I think that speaks to the spirit of bringing it up for discussion, we just want to make our conversations as available to our community members as possible.
Absolutely. And the intent of the traveling committee meetings, so to speak, wasn't that we would be at a different location every single time, but if it's maybe three or four meetings a year, we would go to a different facility, if there happened to be something that was pretty significant that had happened, just to get a sense of how the upgrades were going.
Well, yeah, to also, I mean, and a lot of times, we did, we did have a pretty good crowd when we did travel, because it was interesting, a lot of the community, you know, when you're a Sharpsburg parent, or a Williams Avenue parent, you don't really get to view, and so it was kind of nice, because we did seem to have people come to other schools, because they were able to see what was going on, and see other schools in, in our community, so it was kind of, yes.
For committee or for regular?
For committee. Yeah, when I, I mean, this has been, when I first started on the board, what, 10 years ago, 11 years ago? But yeah, we had a view, I mean, I remember our first committee, we had a view, and it was, I mean, it was pretty crowded, we had to be in the library and.
I think that's a great idea, I think that's something we can work toward, that our committees are perhaps a traveling opportunity to see the buildings, particularly as we move into changes and, and even construction, and that'll give you an opportunity to see them, I mean, it'll give that pocket of our community the opportunity to see you, and then regular meetings can be held at the high school. Okay, we'll work to make that so, which leads us into our next topic, construction. We wanted to update you this evening, but also we wanted to just talk about where we are. So on August the 23rd, we had one of a few that we've had recently here, facility committee meetings, and some of the members of the committee were on our previous facility committee when we started in, and then we rejuvenated that and added a few others. So most all of them wear multiple hats, they're school district faculty, they live in the community, or they're, well, I was going to say a resident, but they're a community member, and they perhaps workforce, or they have a working knowledge with regard to their job, perhaps outside of our community, that could really be helpful to this work moving forward. So our first meeting was on August the 23rd, and we really just took a look at the scope of the project, which is the HVAC technology system, or the system to actually provide that HVAC, the delivery of it, and then of course, the appearance of what it's going to look like once it's installed. So we had a lengthy conversation about that, and we decided it was necessary to go to the middle school, which is where that work will actually begin, to take a look at what that would look and sound like, and so we did that on August the 30th, the entire team was there, and we really went room by room, and we decided that it was truly probably best to come up with a room-by-room plan that would help us to really make sure that in each actual classroom, where you put the HVAC, that that would be the best and least intrusive. Initially, you know, there was, the plan was to have dropped ceilings, and, you know, that was not what many wanted, we really wanted with respect to the middle school to enhance its character, and let the building speak for who she truly is, and that's the grand old lady on Sherman Avenue. So with this entire review of the building's character, and really regarding that, we went room by room, and we also took a look at, at the end of the tour, reviewing the handicap accessibility. We, as, you know, students sometimes are wheelchair, that are not able to fit in the elevator as it stands, or as it is now, so we considered that as potentially making its way onto our list, as in the scope of the project. And then we met again on September the 7th, to really get a good handle of a commitment to what kind of HVAC system that we thought would best serve us in the short term and in the long term, with respect to all of the items, maintenance, durability, and so the HVAC system that was recommended by the architect does offer us the best flexibility and value, and it will certainly enable the architects to customize the application as we move room to room, and to really capitalize on each room's character, and in some cases, specific needs. So where there are dropped ceilings existing, we'll just use those dropped ceilings, and perhaps that will save us money instead of putting in a new dropped ceiling, and then where there are no dropped ceilings, we would not put in dropped ceilings, and would be as they are. We also learned that this HVAC system will include a fully functioning fresh air exchange, which is not something we've had at the middle school, to get fresh air, you kind of have to wave it in, so this delivery system will certainly take advantage of the building's current ductwork, and so the fresh air system will include economizers that will enable the fresh air exchange to occur at a high efficiency without losing a loss of heat or air conditioning. I also want to add that the cost estimates on the elevator will be brought to our next meeting, so that something we'll review, it's not necessarily on the list, it's just something we're willing to review, just a way to effectively provide more access to students and adults with physical needs. And our next meeting will be on September the 19th, at 5:00 PM. And Tim has been helpful to be part of that committee, and Scott has been there as well. Any questions about kind of where we are with that? I know there was some concern, we wanted to make sure that we got a good system, but we didn't destroy the building in the process, and I think we've reached a point where we recognize and understand that that doesn't have to happen, to have heat or air conditioning.
Right.
And we recognize too, that some of what we were doing at the middle school will find its way to the other buildings, and so that's why we've been so careful and so thoughtful to really review the implementation.
How are we doing on our security construction?
So the second set of doors should go in next week, or the week after, there was some conversation about hardware, they changed, they pulled the hardware, so that we use the expertise of our designer to make that so, rather than all being one kind, so it's, it's specific to what the building needs for that space.
And that's at the middle school?
That's at the middle school, that's in all of the buildings, that we're having that second set, second set of doors, so.
So they'll all be in next week?
They should begin the process.
Okay, okay.
I don't remember, did we, you know, it's been a long time ago, when we talked about in part of this cost, are we putting locks on our teacher's doors?
That was on the list, new doors, and I have to think right now, if that was a one, two, or three, do you remember?
It wasn't a one, so it was either a two or a three.
So when we say one, two, or three, there were a list of, you know, desires, and we did have to prioritize them, so as we went into this process, it was safe, warm, and dry, so that these buildings continue to serve the students. So we looked at safe, safe, warm, and dry, and we've been working to that end so far, because we make more decisions that will perhaps open up funds, where we can move things from perhaps one category or another.
Right. Are you referencing the high school?
Yeah, just the lockdowns, you know, when you go into lockdowns, and there's no lock on the door.
Well, it was the substitutes, you have to have a key to unlock the door, and then the custodian would also then have to lock it, so that when they shut it, it would remain locked, because we weren't giving keys to substitute teachers, so if they happened to go on lockdown girl during their time there, they had no way to lock the door, for me, it's because they didn't have a key, because you, I guess you need a key for both sides, like it's not a push button or whatever, so there was some concerns of like, do we, we have any to give them a key, or when the custodian unlocks the door, they also need to then lock it immediately.
Right.
I don't know that any of the elementary schools even have locks.
Yeah, I don't know. I know some of the locations, because I've heard from a friend who's a substitute, when she gets to view, she gets like a packet, and as part of that packet is a key, so then, but then she has to return that at the end of the day.
That's what we do at the middle school, so I would just have to learn what we do in other places, and make sure that that follows through, because if that's an option where you're suggesting, it's just a simple change of how we operate.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right. Item F is Camelot-Lockland Agreement.
So we've had Camelot here, and actually, I, I'm not exactly sure how many years, it's been a few years, then we're located at the middle school, and they provide educational counseling and support services to students with behavioral needs, and we have, we learned probably last spring, that we didn't exactly have enough students to keep that program running, and when I say we keep it running, it really isn't our program, we just host them here in North City Schools, but they, of course, have the advantage of our students having the option for their service, and so it was decided this summer that we did not have enough students for them to be able to host their service here. So they are at Lockland City School District right now, and they have reached out to us because we have a need where not a lot of students, but perhaps just one or two, that may need their service, and we'd like to take advantage of their opportunity. or two that may need their service, and, uh, we'd like to take advantage of their opportunity. So our students, um, it's all Camelot-based, so they take care of transportation, they can take care of the actual service, that there's no cost to the district, it's just that our student would need to go there to receive that service. And, uh, perhaps there will be a few others. I know at the middle school, um, when they used our space in the morning, it was grade seven through 12, and then in the afternoon, they would offer that service to elementary students. And it's the same at Lockland. And I've spoken to their superintendent, who, um, has developed an agreement, and our local council has reviewed it, and we'd like to take advantage of that opportunity to send our students there, um, as that need arises. And it's generally not long-term, it can be, um, but it's at no cost to the district.
Okay.
There are two additional things I just want to tell you that you'll probably see on your next, on the agenda that will change that you don't see tonight, and that is just, um, contracted services through Hamilton County Educational Service Center. You'll see that, uh, as an exhibit, um, and those are things that would take care of our onsite coaching, consultation, and professional development. The other thing you'll see is we're working, we've actually been working for a couple weeks interviewing, um, to find the, just the right person for, um, our tech support. You know, our tech support team is two people right now, which there's a lot of work to do. Um, they've done a great job to get our school district ready, uh, to begin, but we will need an additional person. Um, and so we, uh, have it down to two final candidates, and we'll be doing further interviews this week, and we think we'll be able to bring you the best person real soon.
Okay. All right.
Um, can I, I just wanted to put this, make a suggestion out to the board and to you, Kathy. Um, I know we've had lots of conversations over the years back and forth, um, especially since we closed Allison. Is there a way that maybe we can revisit, um, the lines for where kids go to school? I've had several parents that have made the comment that, you know, their kids are in a classroom with 22 to 25 students, whereas other schools have classrooms of 16 and below. Um, so I don't know if that, I know it's a very big project, and it's with all the other things that you have going on, um, but that might be something that we may want to put and start looking at, because I know it'll be a process, it'll be a while. It'll take us a while to, to look at all those and see if we can redistrict, in what ways we can better service some of the residents.
The beauty of that is that right now, as it stands, grade seven through 12 are all in one spot.
Mm-hmm.
So that's the beauty of that. Um, so it really isolates a group of folks that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. It's a hard one, because as I've, we've watched the numbers over the years, there's some grades that are just bigger than others, and some that like, for whatever reason, like, a particular area like has a baby boom or something, and then that class is bigger.
Well, I know, you know, as a board, we've talked about, you know, this construction and everything, when we get through this, that, um, potentially moving the sixth graders up to that campus, so, which will alleviate a lot of room in the elementary buildings that we desperately need.
Yes, it would.
Yeah. Yeah, doesn't hurt to look at it. Okay. All right. Then I guess the rest of the agenda, can we just work through?
Sure.
Okay. So, um, and, and do you want to go through this part, Jerry?
Yeah, um, we have listed on the agenda under educational report, the memorandum of understanding between Children's Hospital Medical Center and the Norwood School District. Um, this understanding has, is a renewal, um, basically of an existing one. I think we've been in with them since, what, 13, 2013 or 14 or something, um, for them to come in and help in our, um, our school district with nutrition, some nutrition and guidance on, um, being healthy and eating healthy and, and weight loss and monitoring that, so that's what that is. Um, we have some approval of student trips for COSI for Williams and Sharpsburg, um, the Camp Campbell Guard, and that's not until the year end. Then we have the approval for the LPDC meetings in 17, 18, um, that are listed, and that'll be it for education.
Thank you. And then personnel.
We do have a couple of recommendations. You'll see resignations. And personally, you might be thinking about, um, the construction supervisor, that was just a closeout of a former contract. He's still with us, but we wanted to do that, um, and, uh, that's why you see that. You also see another name there, um, that person worked for us for just a few days, and, um, it was just not the job for them, and we appreciate that they stood up so quickly to say, oh, I made a mistake. So you'll see some movement there with hiring someone on and then accepting their resignation. Uh, you'll see formally here some changes in status, and then as I, um, we work to really make sure that our coaches, um, have done all the proper certification requirements. So the supplemental contracts, um, you may see additional names added to that, and that's because they will have completed all of their required certifications, and so we can add them to that list when they do that. So even today, um, people were completing paperwork, so they don't make it on this list unless they've completed all their paperwork. You see, uh, student activities for mostly high school and middle school, and, you know, our very active avenues for success, you see that they're gearing up, and they have folks there that they will need to bring on board to help them with the work.
And we have the officers for detail at our athletic events.
That's right. That is the last item under that.
Okay. All right. And then Scott, there are any policies?
No, it's a light one.
So we're good.
Christmas good to me this one.
Nice one.
Nice one.
Good for Warren. All right, item four, Mr. Bryant, the facilities request?
Uh, yes, we got about five different requests right now. Uh, we've got the Norwood Christmastown, uh, for December. Uh, we got swimming lessons in September and November, uh, lower basketball. We good on gyms, our gym? We good on the gyms for basketball, ready? So we're ready to go. And, uh, let's see, we got, um, let's see, we got the Williams View and Sharpsburg Gyms, they're gonna be using those, as well as the middle school. And then YMCA for, uh, practice for, uh, basketball too.
And my level B is no charge.
Yeah.
Right. I'm curious, I don't remember Christmastown getting the gym the night before, I guess and it's just for setup?
Yeah, they do.
Okay.
They've got, you know, they always hit it the night before.
Yeah, I knew they always set up, I just didn't know that like we, like, that's great. That's good. All right. And then, Mr. Miracle, financial reports?
Yeah, this one, we have the approval of financial reports for August, and also we have the existence of the financial summary, the appropriations and budget update, check register, and the bank reconciliation, and the approval of county educational services. Finally, the, the Camelot Shared Services Agreement that Kathy talked about at the beginning.
Okay.
And I just, if you have a few minutes, I'd like to also update you on the construction project cash flow and some of the investments that about two or three months since I last talked to you about that. So I just, this is a, a cash flow that we're following, um, for right now, and to give you an idea of, um, exactly where...
Jeez.
Of, uh, well, I'm sorry for the small print.
There's a noise out here.
But, uh, the reason, I'm, I'm gonna draw your attention to, what, what we're basically trying to do here is look at the construction funds, which right now, as you know, we borrowed $32 million, uh, for the construction project, and the, the challenge today is to use, some of those funds are gonna be used as we move forward. Uh, you'll see that, um, as we head into, for example, uh, next year, we'll use more of that as the middle school project gets underway, and there's just so little investment opportunity right now, you know, that to go out and get, you know, it's, it's a little, when you tell somebody we're getting 1.2%, um, that's what it is, I mean, today. So some of the strategies that I'm looking at, since I talked to you before, uh, we are primarily in Star Ohio, which is managed by the State Treasurer's Office, and this is a, a quick printout on that, but I will show you, my point in this is the pie chart, what?
That's bad.
Is the pie chart and also their rating. So today, as of right now, we have about $45 million in, um, Star Ohio, which is a large amount. But when you look at it, and you look at the pie chart, you can see that, that here's where they have most of their investments. And by the way, their daily rate today is 1.21% annualized yield. The largest chunk of their investment is in what's in commercial paper, and that is where they're, it could be Toyota Finances issuing debt, um, just a multitude of companies that you can manage. It has to meet a certain level of rating for them to purchase it, and so we're kind of relying on their pooling and expertise to get involved in that. I have not chosen to get into the direct purchase of commercial paper myself, uh, for the district. The, the other key piece to me of this piece of information is just how highly they are rated, which has always been an important part to me of preserving principle. It's one thing that I could come to you and say, gee, we made an extra, uh, .008 or something like that in interest, but it's another if I have to come to you and say the principal's gone because of an investment loss. And their whole design is to not have that happen. Nothing's guaranteed in this world, but, uh, that rating is very good, and it's a very good asset for us to be able to invest in, and as of right now, they're, they're north of $9 billion of Ohio's funds that's, that's being invested. There are two things that I'm looking at going back to the cash flow chart to help augment this a bit or to get some enhanced interest out of this. If you look in the green shaded area, what I've done for you, you'll see two yellow highlighted numbers, and we can purchase bank CDs that will meet FDIC. As you can imagine though, we have to buy those at $250,000 or less, uh, from a bank in Texas or wherever. They're highly rated, but, and they're FDIC, well, I shouldn't necessarily have highly rated as a bank, but there is a Federal Reserve rating, and we do get the FDIC protection on that. So probably within the next few weeks, I'm going to be bringing back to you, um, the suggestion that we look at getting some of these purchased, and probably very much, if you look in the second row of green bars, the real sweet spot there is, uh, around September of 2019 maturities, and we'll probably be looking at, um, trying to, to get a 1.75% rate, uh, for that. Now, in terms of total portfolio, uh, I can't imagine this being more than, it'd probably be between 10% and 20% of the total portfolio. So I'll keep you posted on that, and if you have thoughts or questions as well, I mean, I want to hear those, and, uh, we are posting about $35,000 a month in interest to the construction fund, which will also help down the road as we look at some of the other things and scope that you try to bring to that project.
Can you, um, kind of walk through the process of how, how we, how we're managing the bills that are coming through for the construction, making sure that the work's getting done and it's right, and...
Yeah, we, we don't, we've just started, and to date of what contracts have been let under the bond program, um, took Tim's question a couple of weeks ago, that we're about on one, you know, we're $78,000 under budget. Now, could easily report to you next spring that it's $78,000 over on other things. So the security contract, for example, is, um, that, and so budgetarily, uh, we keep track of that even, and that's with change orders that have occurred to date. The, the process of reviewing the pay apps is that it starts mostly with the architect. The architect, it's a standard, and I'll be glad to send you...
So they are still actively involved, the architects?
Oh, yes. I mean, there is a standard architect, I'm gonna say it's a national form.
AIA-dash something.
Yes. And that is sent to us saying, we certify this work has been done.
Okay.
Now, the element that we're just getting started with, and John's gonna get a form, and so will Dave, that you have field reps as well, that are your field reps, and so what we want to give them the opportunity before we cut a check to that contractor, even though the architect has said this work is, this amount of work has occurred, their expertise is there to do that, more so than ours, and even our field reps, but to give the field reps at Norwood an opportunity to say, but I have some concerns about something. Now, keep in mind, on every pay app, there's retainage.
Right.
So unless it was John saying, hey, I really got a major concern, uh, there's retainage there to deal with, wait a minute, you didn't put the door handles on in 10 rooms or something like that. But we want to bring, uh, to that process their eyes and their review of that as we go, and also on the change order process as well, um, that, that is happening. So we're getting some, some really good processes, I believe, in place. The next round of heavy work, and I was gonna ask you if you would, would speak to that as well, um, is that how you feel with regard to the three meetings to date and even looking at the schedule for next year? So, did I answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So I, I was gonna ask that earlier, and it kind of got away from me going back to that.
The three meetings to date have really helped to focus us to understand exactly what the work is. Um, so while, you know, the architects and, and other folks, you know, SHP were really ready to move forward and start making things happen, we actually slowed them down, uh, quite a bit, um, so that we could understand what the intentions were, what the expectations were, where they were headed, and then we had lots of questions. And so, um, it's, it's not an automatic what, you know, what has been suggested. So we're really trying to get a good handle on the scope of the work, and to review even the ones, twos, and threes, and discuss them amongst us as a group, uh, what is important to us, what we think is important to others, and you notice we've, we've had a lot of meetings actually...
Yes.
...within a short amount of time, but that's given us enough time to go out to other constituents and gather information, and then come back to the table. So it's a very healthy group, um, they're openly discussing and asking questions of our representatives, and it's a healthy thing. So I think we've been able to reach consensus, um, which is another healthy thing, so that we know we're being good stewards of the funds that we've all worked so hard to get, and then of course, that we want to work really hard to make sure that we use them wisely.
And it fits exactly with the question that you asked, because even though it can seem time consuming, and it is, and, and thank you for that, bringing us to that process and, and causing the investment of time, that work ends up with better scope, better bidding, and better decision-making, so that you're not sitting here in March going, we really have some, some handicap issues, ADA issues that we'd like to talk about. That's, by doing that now is really great. So the full circle that, Cherry, is to come back and say, yeah, we're, we're looking at, did we get the work, has the architect certified before we send out a check and those kind of things? But how do we prevent the, the change orders that's in that scope work and the questions that this committee's asking? And we asked very pointedly at the last meeting to the architect, do you have what you need, and are you still able to proceed? And they said, yes. So you've heard that. So the project is still on for, um, taking advantage of the next summer's alleged vacancy, if you will, as Kathy kept reminding them, we're in these buildings all the time.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else? All right. So that'll conclude the meeting, and we are adjourned at 7:08.